Alright, so I just wanna keep us on track with our agenda. We have gone through our board superintendent area with number two and kind of talking through our board work and our board priorities is kind of the next part of that. And looking at different ways that you have assessed the effectiveness of the board, the evaluation of the superintendent and just wanting to briefly kind of touch on those two things. And then that somewhat relates to number two, which is priorities and potential things that I know we'll wanna take a look at, not getting into those today, but how do we wanna kind of position those to think about them together in the future? And so, part of this is just my curiosity. Have you done typically a board self-assessment? Do you periodically do a checkpoint on you as a body? Is that something you don't wanna do, do wanna do? I just have no idea.
You go to NSBA and made classes about it?
We did it this year. We did it this year.
We did this fall, I think. Yeah, once. It was right before it was his name.
We've done it periodically over time. I wouldn't say we've got a regular calendar scheduled, which we probably should. Well, and that's totally up to you. I mean, that's the board's decision. And there are tools out there. There was a decent one where this came from. NSBA has, you know, many, many examples. I just don't know if that's been regular practice or something that is in there. So, that's true.
Not regular practice, but should be. And I just used one from SBSC and put it in the, not survey monkey, but one of those other free surveys, things where people could be anonymous in their responses. And that's just, and I sent out, I put in my Excel and then sent it back out to everybody so that they could see that and scores and comments were.
Well, you put a lot of work into that. So, if there's a tool that, you know, that you might have or have used before that's easier, if I remember right, that was kind of the pain that type of it.
Twice. We did, or that was Dr. Maher's survey.
So, I think, you know, if there are some logical times when the board already gets together for a board retreat, if that's something that you wanna do, I'm happy to help facilitate that. What I think is important whenever you do that is that you then come back around and say, "Let's talk about now what we see and what are some things that we want to do the same, do differently? What's working well? What does this tell all of us when we get to these things?" Because that's how you can have those good discussions moving forward from there as opposed to kind of leaving it hanging out there of, "Well, what is that? What do you mean?" I don't know who said what. So, I would say, "Let's have some discussion about that at a later point." But just kind of know that it's made something that we wanna purposely put into the weeks. And then, the superintendent evaluation, I'm assuming, comes kind of around this time or a little earlier in the year. Typically, it's me, you, and Eliish. And do you all have input in that? Has that been typically the board president? Who has done more? How does that work?
We had a, everyone gave input. Kind of ranked, did a score. What we did last, the most recent one was like based on kind of the strategic plan. I don't know that I love that. I think it's valuable, but I've also looked online for other things that to me seem more tangible because I think that, yes, the superintendent definitely drives the strategic plan, but do you individually actually make an impact on that? I don't know how you can say yes or no. So, I feel like some of the tools I've seen, I would be more interested in looking at just because it's truly your review versus the impact of hundreds of people who are supposed to be doing X work and, you know what I mean? So, I would like to look at that and see how we can get something that's more. And then what we talked about doing here and try to do is kind of a quarterly, like, my philosophy is you should never get something on a review, no matter what your position is, that you've never heard before. And so, I feel like there needs to be a quarterly touchpoint to say, "Hey, here's kind of where we're at." Maybe it's not even a formal written document, but at least it's a conversation that maybe you just type an email to yourself as a reminder so that at the end of the year, you can say, you know, "These are the conversations that we've had and this is a reflection of the final piece."
Do you find out what the goals are?
Yep. Something need to be adjusted because of COVID, because of, you know what I mean? Like, "I just don't have the time or the resources because this blew up instead." Yeah, I mean, that's life. So, it's not like, "Oh, you didn't make that goal." You know, I think it's a, it's a conversation and then there's the actual formal part at the end to say, "These are the conversations we've had all year." It really is a culmination of that.
One of the things that I would propose for this year is that my, my transition plan would be a big part of kind of monitoring that first year and it may be some other things with that too. But that's been something that I then did a quarterly update on where I am and kind of the things that I've set forth in that transition plan. Kind of a to-do list, but then it gives you an idea of how I'm assimilating with the community and who I've been able to touch base with. Or, "Oh, you know, you gave us this and here's something you haven't done that maybe you wanna move up before. It's more relevant for a particular reason." So, I would do that no matter what. That could be a chunk of, I think, it seems for the evaluation. And I think you're right, Carly. There's, there are evaluations that hook directly back to those big district initiatives, but that's dependent upon a whole bunch of things. And then there are the practical things that, do things work well? Like, are you being responsive to emails and are you communicating well? And are you, right, are you bringing things to the board that, that is part of your ability to do your work well? And if that's not happening, then those are the, the real things, if you will, that really impact the overall effectiveness of the organization. So, we can probably talk about that a little bit more even in preparation for next year for an agreement. But primary factor this year would be the transition plan. And I think I can talk with board president and determine if there are, you know, a couple of other things that we want to put in there, those indicators. I think to me, overall, the clarity has to be around what are the, what are the goals and what are the indicators that we're gonna use to determine effectiveness? And if you just set the goal, then it's up to everybody's interpretation as to what that success rate is. So, that would be probably part of this, maybe next year moving forward. Is that what we would all envision or something else?
Quarterly updates on it. I think that's great. That communication of that would be very helpful.
Alright. So, then that kind of takes us to potential district priorities. And all of these are just a list of kind of things that I know about and there may be other things on your list. And then, how do we do, how do we go about doing those things? So, I, I've already said it today that with COVID and the return to learn, that's a huge priority for everybody. I think that's kind of a given. The second thing, and it might be too strongly worded as a priority, but kind of a to-do item that we've talked about would be folding into the work of all of us over the next year so the board can look just as a good practice. Then, I was looking at the strategic plan and kind of redigesting that. I had been through that document a few times just in preparation for coming. And now, looking at it through the eyes of what happened last spring and what does that look like this fall as we try to really get a handle on where are we with things that we knew very closely that may look very different now? And we lost some of our assessment data because of cancellations. And so, I think, as I'm thinking about this, let me, let me just tell you kind of what my thoughts are and then I'd like to hear what you think. The bones of this strategic plan are good. And when I look at what the big areas of priorities are and, you know, were on, it's your big four. The student outcomes, school climate, culture, staff, community engagement. To me, those really still are very comprehensive. So, as I look at this, I don't look at this and go, "Ugh, you know, this needs to get thrown out and redone." To me, what I would propose for this next year is a couple of things. A lot of your ending points on here or kind of, you know, checkpoints were 2020 and we know what happened with 2020 beta. So, I think that gives us one reason to kind of maybe extend the life of this plan. One of the things that I'll wanna do is go through this with staff. I watched the strategic plan update, but I would have to go back now and run that up clearly and say, after we get some of our data this fall or based on what we knew when we last did the update, where are we in terms of, yes, we are on track or no, we are not on track? And get a really good clear picture of where the district is in this particular year is. Then, I'll need some time with staff and things that I am observing and have already kind of gotten some ideas even with listening to principals, what they're working on for, you know, kind of improving effectiveness or things that are included in school improvement plans and how some of what we learned this fall needs to probably get folded into school improvement plans in a little different manner. And then, what I would propose is maybe we look at this as kind of a one-year extension and really that continuous improvement cycle of, you know, looking year to year. I think three-year plans are good for that big long roadmap, but you've also gotta have that good checkpoint along the way. And I know you've done that with updates. I think what we need is kind of the bones of this, but maybe a refresh and then a really strong prioritization of what is most important, given what we find out this fall. My hunch is that we continue to be reading, but what's the sense of urgency? And are the things that we have in place wanting to get us where we wanna be? Do we need to look at our data, look at the community, do we have any questions that can go with this? I don't see that it would be overly wise of us to think about biting this off as a project and then redo after just coming through boundaries with COVID, with data. It just doesn't make sense to me. And we can't even engage with our community in all the same way that we would want to to do a real kind of, you know, comprehensive project with this or process.
That sounds good to me because, hey, there's still things we haven't completed within that plan. And the overarching, like you said before, main priorities, I think, are still our priorities. And. Exactly.
I mean, it's almost like a start over a year in some ways.
Yeah.
Well, and I think we have to be realistic that, you know, especially with assessment being tied to so many of those areas that I think we have to be realistic in that there's probably gonna be a lot of slippage. So, unfortunately, so I think that in a lot of ways, we probably went backwards. So.
I think we're gonna have to be very targeted and very focused on fewer things with some heavy duty urgency. And I don't know what that looks like yet, but I think that will even extend into, what were we not able to do this summer that we planned for, for next summer? And probably we need to have to find within all of those things, getting another analysis of the current. But.
Yeah, I think we need to be really upfront on how the data moved this year.
Yeah.
From this chance, from this chance to test it, that sort of data that we're going to work with. And then number two, because of that data, we need to clear the picture of where we're at.
Yeah.
And then with that, putting in those priority areas as a result of the data, the clear picture, what the priorities are, as a result of those two things. And then, how we might work together, you know, looking at the site going forward to have those checkpoints in between since we're not completely doing a plan.
I think there's that short term and then there's the long term of this. And one of the things that we did in the past district, even just to monitor what was happening, we kind of did a, for lack of a better term, like COVID backboard of what were we monitoring with a different frequency for some different purposes. For a short-term meeting, we had it so that the data was pulled from, and so it was pretty easy to grab that. And I think that would be one thing after we get some initial data in the fall is, here are the two or three things that we're really gonna watch closely as we get going in the year. And then, now that we see that, what does that now tell us for a longer-term picture for everybody?
What my question to Carly, before we got, well, when we first went into COVID and when they removed the assessment requirement by the state is, has the state looked at revising what is considered proficient and so forth on those things now that we've all missed out on, you know, in the quarter of school and then going into the fall? And have they, I don't know if that's a.
And I, I would have to ask that right now. In fact, there was just a number of people on the call this morning in that frequent call. So, most states have kind of suspended some of the rules, if you will, that are identifiers for school media because we just think this is such an outlier. I believe that was the case here, but that's something I think that once that comes back in play as a normal thing, then what does that look like? And I think we'll have to have that. We'll all look at this year's and, you know, last, last year's, this year's data differently because we know it has to be, you know, this one. And really, probably for the next two or three years.
Oh, exactly.
Yeah.
And that's the thing is when they did that, when they had their special session, they ended and then they.
Yes.
This isn't just the last spring.
And you know, even if we have schools that are designated, it wouldn't normally be designated. We all know the reality behind that data and it doesn't mean that we don't pay attention to it. We need to have even more urgency, but we know some of the extended why. Yeah, and that's gonna be every year.
Just out of curiosity, if, would it have been even possible to have kids take MAP in the spring? I mean, or did they just shut every, like, yeah, this last quarter?
Online, is what you're saying.
Yeah, because it was online. I just, I wasn't sure if other districts may have just done the, you know, done the assessments, but obviously just, you know, just for information.
Internal use only.
But maybe they just shut down the.
The protocols for proctoring these tests would be very difficult to do. And so, it's still the efficacy of that testing is tremendous, but then would be lost. And that's why you saw SAT, they came back online and ACT because then you could, you know, either they waived some of that or you did it in another way. But that's why, and then there's following, you have a school district that has one elementary and you could have, you know, five kids come to five rooms and you did that in shifts with an adult in there. You could do that. Well, for us to, you know, pull that off, so some of it's.
I was thinking like, "Oh, the kids could have done it at home very easily," but I didn't even think about the proctoring.
They might have been able to do, and, and this is just me totally off the top of my head and from what I've done in MAP before.
I do.
There are some practice tests and some benchmarking tools, but I don't know if the district will use those already. And if it was a new tool, then to get people logged in and you have to have your student number and it has to be assigned to the student, the logistics for that is pretty tough.
I selfishly just wanted to see where, you know, where my kid was.
I know.
How good of a teacher you were at that.
Yes. Let's just say what we're really thinking.
I was working while he was in school. It was self-guided.
But there is the reality of that. Many of our students will have done fine and will probably be at about where they were. And I know former districts had kids who would zoom forward quickly. If your father is an mathematician, you know, for their job and can support that work, you can keep going quite a while. I've heard many of them said, "Even though I'm a mechanical engineer, my child won't listen to anything I have to say about high school science." So, you know, there's the reality of that too. But, yeah, I think, I think we'll wanna know as much as we can with our, our standardized assessments and then our district common assessments as those, which will also help us. And you know, that's one thing, I think, that's a little off topic with that, although COVID is on. This is COVID-related, the return to learn, is there's always that balance with assessments of what is the good information that we take from it? How does that inform our practice and our programs? And not crossing the line for that to mean more than it should because there's a whole bunch of things that happen with our students, good, bad, or indifferent that we have to pay attention to. That's where that whole child comes in. At the same time, our kids need to learn to read and they need to learn many, many other things because we are still responsible for their education and we don't want this to be something that hangs on their entire life. And so, one of the things we've been talking about is that sense of urgency too, which is really hard to couple together with care and concern and safety and need to keep learning teaching the line. So, we'll have to strike a balance. Okay, so that kind of gets us through this next year and what we believe to be true about our strategic plan and how we'll kind of view that over the short term and the long term. And it takes some time to think about if we wanna revise this. And then, maybe it's not a full-scale community process, but maybe it's a representative community group that will come in and have eyes on what the revised version might look like or some things like that that we can talk about. The other thing that I put on there was other possible priority topics and I know there are a number of things, some that are just gonna come up as part of school district business with enrollment and some programmatic things. And I sent you this template. I got a blank version of it. This is just a tool that's a good tool for, if we say, you know, maybe it's a new initiative, maybe it's something that we've been working on. If it's something that we decide the board wants to do as a priority, something like this helps us know where we are in the process and the timeline. We can attach a timeline or not. But is there anything else that you're thinking about that should be a priority for the board that wouldn't just be part of school district business or things that are already worse?
Is that, that, can you reference, is that part of this?
To email it? No, I had just sent that as a sample template. I can send it to you.
No, no.
It was just a quick, it was an example.
If it's the same one you emailed off.
Yep.
Um, ironically, we have talked about having that student.
Yeah, I knew somebody that goes and grabs, "Oh, that's a good idea."
Yeah, so I thought that was interesting. And I don't know that we tackle that this year. Maybe we do, maybe we don't, but we had talked about that. We had, I think several of us had gone to an NSB conference on that and we were talking about when we have our fourth high school that maybe that would make sense, have some sort of a rotation with, with that. So, I'd like.
And this template's used to, you know, you don't always get to the implementation or to the sustaining part. Sometimes you go through, what's the initiative, planning to look at it and exploring? And you go, "You know what? This, this isn't something. This just, this is just a tool to help everybody see it at the same point to say, "Well, didn't we decide to do this?" Well, no, we got this far and then we didn't. And so, we don't have to use anything like this if that's not valuable. But I think that's what helps you say, "Okay, as a board, we really are interested in this thing and how do we go about the process of exploring it, deciding if it's something we need to deal with or not?" Some of that is then, you know, staff saying, "Well, yes, we can pay for it. No, we can't." Or, "It's feasible, but these are these other things," or whatever. Yeah. Or, "Policy has to be a little bit." It just is a good tracker for the board.
I, I don't know if that puts you there, but something that resonated with me and I think several of us board members when you interviewed with us was we talked about budget and how you developed the budget. Where you had been, where you kind of went to the board first and then. I think we all really liked that because this is my first year on budget committee and.
Having a bone in it.
Yeah, and it's already been basically established. Yeah, it's basically already established and we'd be the naysayers. Does that make sense? It's how it's been done in the past. And so, and I know that, like, not for this year's, but she, because it's kinda said. But I mean, going forward, if that would be a shift that could be implemented, I think as board members, it would be appreciated because.
That you should be a part of, really, not just pull.
So, after the fact.
And tell me what you, if you want to cut, then you would like. You're saying that, right?
Right, because. To me, the way you presented it, and I could be wrong, was it was more like you came to the board and said, "Where are your priorities? Where should we focus on budget and so forth?" And then, you went to your committees and department chairs and so forth and developed a budget. How it's been, the year I've not been on budget committee was, they basically sent them all, you know, do a 10% like, you know, do their cut type thing and, or get a 100%, 110% budget, comes back to them, they, they can be not, uh, see them involved, the board is involved, then they go back and kind of get a number and then they bring something in. And these are the five we're gonna cut, or something like that. So.
I just wanna bring up two points because you've made a good point. It is important, but to what the process is. And then the second piece of that is that we have a budget that is tied to the priorities, strategic initiatives. And it's, it's easy to align that. And going back, I sat as a volunteer on curriculum committee for several years, of which I'm saying that intentionally as well, that we do have committees that are, that are currently going, that are happening, where we have volunteers from the committee as part of those groups. And I think that's a great place to also look for interested school board members. So, but the piece that, that we have, so with the curriculum piece, what we did is we would have, here's what the curriculum would look like if we get 100% of the budget approved. Here's what it is at 80%, 60%, so that all of that was approved. And then, once the entire budget is approved, you can, you can go wherever, you know, align it, whatever you insisted about. But what was, what's missing or has been missing is that you can see how that is tied to the strategic plan of the district. I don't know whether you wanna color code it in general, but I would, there are ways to do that because of other foundations that I sit on that have an operating budget that would be similar to the size of this budget.
Past districts have even just framed it up as, this is, these are the ones that align with this area of strategic planning. It's just called out that way by, by sections. It's presented kind of a big picture budget. I think it's always a collaborative process and I don't know well enough here how committee things work in preparation for. So, part of it is that complicated where staff are really looking at numbers of people you need and what are the things that are requiring new, whatever, and what's being carried from year to year to year that has to just be automatically put in a then. There's, you know, if, if there are things that go in as a new initiative, we should have talked about that in one of those venues before it makes its way onto that budget. So, I wouldn't see, you know, it's, it's not Todd's pet projects and it's not the other Todd's pet projects. It's collaboratively, what are the needs of the district and how is that reflected in what's put in that budget? And some of that is to start things, some of it's to continue things and some of it is because it stops and it's probably. And so, maybe what would be good to do is just, you know, here for the next few months, long before we get into the next cycle, is let's just kind of outline the whole flow of things and see where we have opportunity for input, feedback around sections of it. And then, when does that kind of culminate as a total picture that's then proposed? And then, how does that look? One of the things that will be, you know, a little different is I'm coming from many years of growing districts, which means growing budgets. And now, all of us, all of those growing budgets are either halted or potentially shrinking. So, it's kind of like, you know, the train that's chugging along and has to stop now and start going backwards and we all know how that feels. So, I think it'll be a little tricky with that. But one thing would just be that, what's the current process? And then, you can see it and then you can say, where do we want to rearrange or, or adjust?
And then, also helps us to, I think, as higher leaders, to make sure that we're funding and maybe we're there this first. I think another piece of feedback that we've gotten in the budget is teacher participation.
And it seems like um what we've defaulted to is having instructional culture as our teacher representative. But really those people aren't in the classrooms, aren't teaching students. And so their view of what um might be necessary or might be nice or might not, might be able to be are just different than that of an actual classroom teacher. And so I would love to see if there's a way that we could actually get, you know, unenthusiastic teacher, a middle school, whatever it is that's part of the process. And I understand that means you have substitutes and, you know, things like that because a lot of these meetings happen during the day. Where it is easier to pull that instruction from college from the school for that two hours or whatever. But I think the, the value that you would get by having a teacher um be in that. Not just the fact of having a teacher, but what the vision of that would be and how that person would be portrayed as truly being part of the team versus feeling like they were falsely represented, which I do find.
Yeah, and I think um that's a good thing to think about. There's a huge difference of things that run through my mind when you hear that. Part of it is the value of lots of different perspectives. That's a good thing. You know, SFBA is part of that, bringing that teacher lens to things. And I'm not sure how that has played into um, you know, kind of having eyes on things and formation of. Um, having teachers look at it can be a really good thing. It can also be very overwhelming for them because it's so much and they don't want to do the wrong thing. And then they also run the risk of their colleagues saying, why didn't you, you know, do X, Y, or Z? And that puts them in a difficult place. Whereas if they do that organizationally um and allow feedback, but to have it flow through the right mechanism. But then preserves their relationship with colleagues. But I hear what you're saying in terms of different perspectives and being able to look at that and feel like your voice was heard or was had an avenue to provide the feedback. Um, that looks different when you're adding than when you're subtracting. And that also feeds into how district helping structures work with um providing feedback to your principal. And the principal having that mechanism to say, here's what my staff is saying and here's what that looks like at our level. And then there's a big picture. So I think all of that is something, like I said, if we outline that process and then we can say, you know, how does this look for kind of the, where's the entry point? For somebody to give feedback and create problems.
That's good.
Kind of review of it.
If we're looking at our students and the product that the district is putting out and quality, what that product looks like. We search it and it shows that then that's supported that the teacher plays a primary role in success of that student. Whether it's graduation rate, whether it's in that math scores, we need our teacher in the classroom. So it's a example of going to have to make tough decisions, the budget cuts, that we keep first inform what is in question for the student. And that we really advocate so true to replace the primary role in success in the world and that that product for that student.
I think the old adage of doing things as far away from the classroom as possible is always a good thing. And make sure to work from and how to really um preserve that teaching money as best we can. Knowing that a lot of things have to be first for that to happen. We'll, we'll, we'll define that, but you're right. That's a good point.
I mean, it takes all, but it also there's efficiencies that will work.
Yes.
But it's really tricky to find those efficiencies within the classroom.
Right.
When you have kids.
Exactly. Yeah.
At least.
Right.
Yeah, exactly.
Nope, good thoughts. Anything else with that? Other thoughts or ideas? Those are very good.
Is this where we would add? I guess um, you know, we had talked about doing the. The like education for, um, you want to be a school board or a.
Oh, yeah, I've got that kind of listed there. It's, I think that holds in there. As I looked at some of the other ideas, I think a lot of those will be part of future either work sessions or are still embedded within that strategic plan. And they just need to be pulled out or paid attention to again. I think we can talk about that as we go on in our regular meetings and and if we kind of set those topics. And what first things first are their timelines, their policies, things attached that will have a, a time factor to them.
Online and moments?
Yeah.
It's, it's in beta.
Yeah, I think it's coming. Yeah, and you know, some of those things I know as you're, as you brought them up and have been kind of, they're in motion. Some of those go back to what I talked about as work grease, where it's just an update of here's where we are in the process of getting this ready. And it's not really a board item for a formal meeting, but yet it just kind of helps you have an update on what's happening.
And it's not necessary, you know, um to, like, that's not a, I'm going to go back to that article. It's not a com- complex issue. It's complicated. You've got staff that can do that. But yeah, just like a quick.
A paragraph that says, here's where we are.
That's all I need to know. Yes, we're on it.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Sometimes that's the hardest thing, I think, for board members is you, you know it's happening, but you're just not sure where it is or when it's coming back to an agenda or what.
I think it was like last March, I, I had reached out to Dr. Mark who sort of suspended our one on ones. And I said, I said, are you working on plans for returning to school? Not for this year, but next year. And he sent me this long, you know, email. He's like, I'm not sure if that helped. I said, no, it did. I just wanted to know that you were working on it.
You just said yes.
That's all you had to do was say yes.
What I think I'll do is use just a couple of those ideas for kind of a try on for my next update. Where I just grab a few and say, hey, staff, let's try this out. Just do a quick paragraph update. Because part of that will help me learn too this year. Things are already in motion. I don't have the backstory on people that can help me. We'll try it and see what they say. Yeah.
Um, I think one of the things that um what that I had added to this list was the um diversity piece. And I think in the um, you know, our current situation from a community rural scenario. This has always been important, but I think it's really important even now. And I know one of the things um that I believe Dr. Mark said, maybe he did the first or second year that he's here. That they invited the diverse populations of our current staff. So whether it's, you know, the, some of the Spanish merchant teachers or whether it's minority teachers at different schools. And they did like a meeting and they just talked about, how can we support you? What are your aspirations? What are your goals? And how can we help you to achieve them? And um just in doing that, there were a handful of people who have gone on to get, you know, their teaching degrees. And, you know, or advanced degrees or whatever and what a difference that has made. And I feel like as our community continues to change, we have multiple schools where it would be amazing to have a Bible hall, a Bible hall. Um, and we have staff in our building. So how can we, just like people came and tapped us and said, have you ever considered being a board member? Sometimes that's what somebody needs is to know that somebody has that faith in them and sees that um potential. And so I would love to see us somehow be able to reach out to our current staff members who already know the district. Who already know our billings and our kids and have connections and say, we want you. We don't want you over somebody else, but we want you to know that we believe in you. And what kind of support? Was it a mentorship? Is it an internship? Is it something in the summer? Like what is it that we could do? What ideas do we have that would help you and support you? And I think that would go a really long ways in helping us to get more of our staff reflective of what our state looks like. And we have, you know, we've got this great teacher pathway, but we're years out from getting students who have gone to school and graduated and can come back. Um, and so what can we do with the people that we know already?
There are like, I got one in contact with Jamie, who she was a teacher in Mexico.
Sure.
And she's a VA at June County. So, I mean, that's, so she's part of that teacher pathway. So she's totally doing those things. And also, you know, I'm thinking like storytelling um is such an important feature of doing that. And like student, I think, like, you know, when we like, who was a written G, who's now a teacher in the district or other teachers like that.
Yeah.
Who could tell a story that can also go to our kids and other staff and say, this is the things that I do.
I was, and here's how I got to what I'm doing now and you can too and you want to see.
You and I telling that isn't true that.
You need to hear their stories.
Exactly.
So that's kind of, you know, looking at those um populations of people, how can we really encourage them to be those leaders that they can be? Um, who maybe haven't had necessarily had the opportunity or maybe realize that for themselves.
Um, there's something in it, it's too early to know what I'm talking about yet here in this context. We talked a little bit about it to one of our staff members the other day is the, it's called the natural leadership program. It was more parents, um, but it was, it was parents um who are typically um immigrants or who are newly community. English is not their primary language and part of it is to connect them with other parents. And part of it is to grow their um leadership in their school, whether it's in PTA or volunteering. And then they also um begin doing some great things with skill development and helping the path to enroll in. And it's parent to parent, which is also really great. And then um many of them can work for the district. And so that's one thing that I'll um take a look and just kind of see what, what do we have that might be. Some are part of that already that could be more robust or maybe something that's new, it's brand new. So I think it's both our staff and our existing staff, it's our parents and our families and it's our future students who are going to be adults. So, you know, it's as many faculty as we can find. Um, ultimately to have people in our schools that are looking for students in our communities. I think, you know, I looked for that in here and that sphere of being, um, you know, over time, those things mean they're creating in our communities. Go through change and growth. And so maybe it's also just looking for some of the show, which we can do. Great, good thoughts. All right, are we ready to go on to number three?
I don't know how many of these. I did have the chamber board meeting. This, just very briefly, Jeff Griffin has now stepped in. He nicely came to our last boundaries, I think, meeting. We spoke about the process and some of the things that happened to be a kind of update on what we were doing. They're still, they're starting to meet. They just, this was our first meeting again in person, but people could still. And, and the mayor spoke about sales tax and that numbers are down, but not as bad as they had thought. The states are actually would be okay for the DC. So that's hopeful. So um we.
Will give us more money?
Yeah. But I'm just.
More of less?
Right now, unfortunately, I'm happy with 32%.
True, true.
So um, you know, it's perspective, right? Um, um, Sumerian Leadership also met and they are focusing on diversity and inclusion. And so um Kyra Kimball um has started a group of people.
Shelly, I don't get those meetings right.
You don't anymore?
No.
I will email her again. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you.
And um.
What's that group?
It's a Sua and Kyra leadership council.
Oh, yeah.
And so they um, it's uh, there's a memorandum of understanding with the school district. Um, with the city, with the county, with the two hospitals, with this premier, um, with the uh, Sioux Falls area community foundation. Andy is the chair of it. And um it, the first project they took on is the AIJ center, um, which we have one in our community. Yeah, so that was the first one. Uh, we don't have any authority. We just are coming up with ideas and exploring and getting the right people in the room to send it live. So the first member of it. It uh, so diversity and inclusion is the next, I'd say, major rock they're looking at examining. And um, uh, Damian Dicer is a member of that in this group, I think, three B. Has been big on pushing this, which he and his partner have really in this community taken a leadership role in more diversity and training leaders in the community. Because like Kate had pointed out, it's very hard for people to become a member of the Sioux Falls leadership.
Leadership who falls.
Leadership who falls from the chamber. It costs a lot of money. You have to basically get your employer to sponsor you and miss work and some things like that. So this is a different way to promote leaders of diversity in the community. She's saying about that and then Kyra Kimball, she works at, I always forget, Marshall McLennan? Is that the name?
Yeah, hold up.
I always want to say hold like McDowell, but it's Marshall McLennan.
Yeah, Kyra Kimball.
Kyra, thank you. And so she um has started some trainings as well for employers on diversity. Because there really isn't, you know, the mayor has been approached by some tech companies, some people in Sioux Falls. And have, has asked, what are, what in Sioux Falls are you going to train on that? So you can promote Sioux Falls and so forth. So these are kind of the first steps in doing that in Sioux Falls. And I think that'd be great, you know, obviously there's something we could probably do and all that. And then budget.
Um, I'm on the insurance committee currently. So we met in June. Um, we've been having some meetings. Uh, so some of the things that we talked about then, um, at the time that we met, we were at 92.6 of our expected planes year to date. And at that same time last year, we ran a 97.3, so um down. There has been a 25%, there was a 25% reduction in claims just in April alone. Um, and that has varied state to state, um, based on what the stay at home orders were given for that state. Um, and then given the fact that really most hospitals were not doing elective surgeries, that was a huge reason I mentioned too. We are currently at about 70, 30 year cost share. So the district is paying about 70% compared to employee at 30. We are, from a budget perspective, running about four and a half percent better than last year. Um, some of it's COVID related and then some of it is we've gotten some pre sizable pharmacy predates back into that to help with our budget as well. And some, usually about the time that we were meeting, we would be talking about the potential of maybe doing a premium holiday when we're doing as well as we were. Um, but we decided to hold off until fall to see what happens when we open back up and people again return to the hospital. And to see if COVID continues to be an impact. And so um do not, do not have any premium holidays up offered to staff this last year. Policy, we haven't really met, met. We've, the policies that we've gotten have been really, really minor. Um, and so I don't, are we scheduled to meet in August again? I don't think I have anything on my.
Probably.
Yeah, we have a major policy.
Yeah.
Roll in for policy.
So that'll be part. And then um Kate and I are also on the calendar committee. And so I had requested that we reconvene just to look at the calendar to say, do we do something different? Should we be starting earlier? Should we have a longer break over Christmas? Should we have a spring break, like just for our social distancing, whatever? And I was kind of surprised, um, the consensus really of the group, which contains everyone from barrio unit parents, um administrators, whatever, teachers at all levels. Yeah, was really like, why would we plan for something that we don't know will happen? And so we are not making any changes to the calendar um at all. Which interestingly enough, like I know Hairsburg, starting a week early and I think added a week to the end. Um, just to have extra days built in in the event that we needed them. And if they don't need them, then they'll get out a week early. And so I know, I don't know of anybody else. That's only one I've really heard about locally that has maybe just been on the calendar. But when you pass a calendar, how many are typically two, two? Yeah, so we have this one set for this coming year and then we have 21.
One at a time, but we're two ahead.
Yeah, we have 21, 22 has been adopted. And we try not to change it, but we also know that if something comes up that makes sense, then we can make.
It's just nice when you get into that room, if you, you get a fairly good structure that people are relatively happy with.
Yeah.
And you keep pushing that a few years.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, we learned the hard way a few years ago, so.
I think every school board has had some calendar story or two.
Three years, we had to start after Labor Day.
So. So, yeah, we had one meeting and people were really not in favor of making any changes to it. There were a variety of concerns, whether it was um, you know. There were a variety of concerns, whether it was, um, you know, not being able to make sure that people don't travel to other places and bring stuff back, kids not having access to food or other thing, you know, like there were a variety of things. And, um, we're just general, alright, we're gonna do what we have to do. And there are other interesting conversations, like people saying we should really never have a snow day again because we improve that we can do remote learning. Well, you can't send your home books home with kids and hope and guess if there's a, you know, so I don't think that that's realistic. But, um, certainly could have, if we had a mess for two weeks or something because there was an outbreak, you know, we could go back to that and it's a part of the planning that that's already underway, so.
Yeah, I mean, snow days are one of those things where, um, I think that along with the remote days, we're waiting for the state to provide some firm guidance on that, yeah, for funding purposes. But, you know, multiple, um, days out should not affect us. And so it might be that, you know, to get going, we need to look at what are we doing for current practice on taking devices home? And having capacity to do, and to be able to do this differently than we used to before. And, you know, at the same time, there's the reality of still doing that quickly for two days as opposed to two weeks. But perceptions have changed and all that, so there will be people, I'm sure, on the first snow days and why are you, why are you doing this now? Right, that's right.
I don't know.
One eight hundred not.
Kid doesn't like waking up to snow and knowing that they can.
There is a little magic to it.
And teachers feel the same way.
Yes, they do.
We have to come back after Memorial Day.
I see their Facebook posts, I'm happy about that snow day as the kids are.
Yeah.
So, even if they have to make it up at the end of the year.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to see if they have the same level of quality after spending one day.
Right.
And there's gonna be, I mean, I think there's a whole lot with that now of, you know, I've gotta stay home. And I think there's also going to be some residual effects. We'll take that as a comment. Good.
Um, the Education Foundation met, and I would say of significance, uh, with that is um, the Educator Committee, um, was approved. And the purpose of that committee is to share grant information with the educators on the district, oversee teacher spot meet, serve as ambassadors for the payroll deduction program and identify student talent for Education Foundation events. And it is also a great way to get, um, volunteers involved at the committee level uh, to see who would have interest to serve on the board. They did the above and beyond, the award, the Teacher Appreciation Week recap. There are sixty five nominations, twenty three schools represented, forty eight donors. Um, more than half were new donors. Um, they raised around three thousand dollars, so the average donation was about thirty seven dollars, so sixteen gifts were awarded. I think they're the primary significance was the new donors, that they're cultivating more interest uh in the city. Um, the School District Breakfast kickoff, which to date is their largest single fundraiser. Um, it looks like that will be more of an online, um, event as opposed to in person. To justify due reasons and additional expenses that would be incurred, uh, to observe social distancing.
Um, so that's not August sixth now, that meeting on that?
Right, as of June, the June meeting, it was still scheduled for an in-person event. We just had a meeting this week and it's looking like that's going to change.
Is it still gonna be on that date and just virtual or?
Uh, yeah, just virtual. Um, they have, as of, uh, June, although the updated financials are a ten four up if anybody's interested. But they have about a hundred eighty thousand in their checking account. Um, yeah, and that doesn't include them, they have reserved for restricted funds. Um, I can pull that up once. But they, they just keep going steadily, um. Update. They have. About seven hundred five, one hundred fifty six or nine. Oh, they have right around ninety thousand. So they're, they're having at it. Without COVID, are they still planning on doing? That event to be.
Public school proud?
Yeah. Well, um.
Where they're just kind of waiting and seeing.
At this point, they're waiting and seeing because last year that brought in about ninety nine thousand.
Isn't that Allison yet?
Okay. Does she work strictly from home?
She's moving with Allison.
He's the chair of the foundation. And is she working, she's working, I'm not sure she is.
No, but doesn't, doesn't she usually office here?
He does.
But so then she's.
A different entity.
Jane hasn't met her.
I think many of them are waiting to see what we're gonna say. And we're waiting for others, for their guidance. And so we're all at times.
Down the road.
Well, and you know, like back to school night and what we're gonna allow for building new things like that are just now kind of getting, um, firmed up. And so I think some of those annual events, if we say we're not doing this urgently annual event, we then our companion partners are not as well. So, hard as that is. If we still continue to support it.
Can you do this? The education.
Can you just remind me of the committees? We've got insurance and policy and instruction or education? Education? Which is different, that's the foundation, education part of.
Chamber, which is typically the president.
So you attend.
Yeah.
That's not a committee.
Yeah.
But just typically give a report. President is executive, you know, on the chair.
Yes, Sumo Pirate Leadership.
Is that something?
Sports authority.
The Sumo Pirate Leadership, who oversees that, who administers them?
That tells ourselves. It's a memorandum, it's all those members, I guess.
And then.
And did Andy as the chairman?
Andy from the Community Foundation is the chair.
Right.
So it's under the umbrella of the Sioux Falls Air Community Foundation.
Overseen, no, they, they, he's just the chair, he's the elected chair. They don't oversee it. What happened is, um, Aaron Serska wrote a grant through the city um, that he's funding that pays for like food, it says it, but that's a full separate fund. It's not, doesn't even come from the Sumo Pirate Leadership Council to get this off the ground. Because they saw a need in the community for collaboration between all the governmental entities to work together on projects. But we have no authority to do anything or any funding. Funding, things and projects will arise out of us, but they become separate entities. So there's a whole separate entity that now oversees the VRJ, which is, it is members of our group, but it isn't part of our group.
It's a better organized, uh, city council. Yeah, a school board breakfast meeting.
Okay, so what are, that is something, I guess we didn't add that to the, this.
I talked about it with Andrea yesterday.
Um, are we still hosting it?
We are, we, we, we can talk about that, um, here in the next couple of weeks. And my thought was, um, I don't think we can even do it in August because of physical distancing and not, you know. We still.
We usually kind of took this on like July and August.
Yeah, so we've got a little bit of time, is what we said, to decide what we then want to do with the rest of them and what topics we might want to do. And to see if it's still relevant to the other participants or if there is another version of it or if it's, you know, still what we all want to do. Otherwise, it's our year and we'll.
I think that that, I mean, it's, it's, it's a really good question. There, there was a time when it was well attended by city councillors, county commissioners, school board members from T, Brandon, us, Harisburg. Um, it certainly has not been well attended over the last couple of years. Um, and I, I, I do think that that's a disservice, unfortunately. I mean, it was a time that we could get together and then now this, we have this Sioux Falls Leadership Council. It's, you know, where there is engagement, I mean, the mayor is there, actually shows up. You know, but it's not available to everybody, so, um.
Well, I just came from convening, you know, I had multiple communities where I was and I just got all of the mayors and two city council reps and all of the, you know, people to gather with me.
Mm-hmm.
And there was great engagement there, but that was the only game in town for those entities to all be together. And this feels like a little different, but, um, it might be just analyzing what have we said is the primary reason for the convening. And if it's just to learn and know about each other, that may be available now in other ways that weren't at the time that was formed. If it's to track how things are going related to a specific thing and we need certain people to be there to do that, maybe that's a clear version of it, I don't know. But maybe it's just needs to go away and be replaced in some other way, I don't know who's got the authority to say it's going away either.
Ownership between, you know, all of different participants.
Yeah.
That's what they haven't had.
People.
Exactly.
How, how can I understand, because I'm trying to make the connection between the morning breakfast, the ID and this, this leadership council is the entire group, like we work the morning breakfast, supposed to be at the Sumo Pirate Leadership Council?
Two separate entities, no relationship.
So we have no relationship with.
Similar people, it, I'd say it's like, you know, if I.
Then diagram.
It's like cousin.
Yeah, there, there, there's, there's no discussion amongst them, there's not sharing of anything. It is separately run entities. But several of the members are.
But you've got the same, you've got the same players.
And not all of them.
So they just invite whoever with the group just invites one person from the school district to have representation there?
When they were forming against Cindy Hyburger, Cynthia Serska asked me to be on.
They wanted two school board reps, so.
Yeah, after they.
Cynthia and I are on it, although I'm, I'm not getting the meeting invitation, so.
And I've asked Erin how many times to do it?
Um, so, um, I thought they just weren't, hadn't been meeting, um, but.
This was the first one.
Yeah, but, yeah.
Um, yeah, so what happened is, that's how it was kind of formed.
And Cindy Hyburger.
She's a consecutional?
Oh, she was in chair.
Okay, that's.
So, going back to some of our, our staff, are those things that would be helpful, like in what's coming up to say this is, or do you already list that, if this is this meeting and these two people are representing the board?
Andrea has a list of all.
And she's got all of those on there?
All the meetings, yeah. We'll read them here after, after live.
Yeah. But you're, you've captured that on that.
Yeah.
Because then usually Andrea or somebody else will email whoever is the point person and say, this is your school, this, your school board member has stayed the same. Your school board member has changed, it's no longer Cynthia, it's Carly or whatever, and here's her contact information. And then that group is supposed to reach out to us to say, here's your meeting invitation. But usually on that, it'll say like they meet quarterly, they meet.
Okay. So you got what Jane needs for people to know who's going to be there?
Yeah.
Sometimes you have to follow up a few times, yeah. Todd was on housing and then it kind of folded and now it's been inventing himself or something.
Yeah. But do you, on your list, you have calendar, insurance and policy?
Yeah.
Okay, and then you have Education Foundation?
Um, and insurance and early childhood.
Or Head Start.
Early childhood Head Start, yeah.
So do you have any things you'd work on though?
No, they tried to have them, put a meeting together and I couldn't get many.
And then.
Budget.
Yeah, budget.
Yep, top down.
So, we've clearly covered policy, calendar, um, Sioux Falls Leadership. Uh, the only other committee I'm on is called PATH, um, and that's our safe pathways. Um, and that's a combination of school district personnel, police, um, city planners, um, community members. And we have not met since COVID, but I would expect to have to meet. And I think they might take the summer off too, this is my first year, but I think they take the summer off. Um, but I would expect we would need to start meeting, you know, September, November to talk about safe pathways for the new schools.
Okay, so when you say committees, when you, when you give committee updates, it's specific school, district committees and every other committee that you might be participating in with board members?
So there are some city committees that require a school board representative, right?
So Kate's PATH committee is actually not, it's not a school district.
Right, but you still report back to the board.
Still report back.
Okay, that's just a little bit different to me. Board committees is just district committees that board members sit on, so.
I don't know that there's, I'm like, wait, what's the? What else besides PATH, I saw sports authority would be.
And then the Sumo Pirate Leadership Council.
That's not a school district, like that would be a. Oh.
Housing is a city committee.
And they always ask, they control it, nothing politely asked, sorry, what's happening?
It was amazing, that question.
There's so much, I, I just want to have to do three.
Um, will you be opening up the press queue?
It's my area.
Todd. We'll bring snacks.
Todd was here.
Tell me what I'm supposed to bring, food or?
In the social moments.
Careful what you say, Todd, I'll give you a list. I can do that.
Yeah.
You just gotta make friends with all those people.
Then I can eat what I want, okay. So.
That might be a good idea though, to, you know, take that list of committees and mark which ones are district versus.
Yeah, other.
Yeah, maybe your city. Basically, I think they do it because then in our consent agenda after that meeting, wherever, where we get signed, then Bev knows which ones can be paid for our board time to, if that makes sense. So it's not, that's why it's not just the district, it's any board commitment that we're asking you. It is in right, you make, then she can pay us for that.
Distinguish this a little bit becoming two, but they're all sort of.
And one thing I've, I've mentioned, um, um, I think to most of you at this point is, um, having, when I served as president, it was my first time on budget committee. And I, I feel like being on budget is a super valuable, um, opportunity and for professional development for us board members. And because we have two, two spots on a committee, I personally think that board president should always be the rap, whoever that board president is that year. And then maybe have that second board member be like rotational, just because like Carly, like, man, I know you've never been on budget committee. Harley, Harley's never been on budget committee and, you know.
Right. That could be difficult just with the way our terms are.
Oh, yeah, no, I just, I just, two years might be hard just because of a three year term.
Yeah.
Well, I just periodically run a, you know, budget one oh one for staff or new board members or whoever just needs a refresh. So we would do that periodically.
Quickly to go back to the board orientation.
Quickly to go back to the board orientation, I did, I met with Cynthia and Dr. Maher for a couple of hours.
Yep.
We went through the board book loosely. And then I met with, um, the leadership staff. Um, or leadership team.
Yep.
Uh, and that was over the course of several days. And with that, in meeting with Todd, there was a overview of the budget, but I also, I met with him before I decided to run. And it was, it was valid. But it'd be great, we don't get the benefit of that every year.
And you don't get the benefit of being part of that committee and hearing the discussions.
Yeah, I don't mean to imply that I had any weight to pull in this year, but I mean.
I just, I mean, that's just my, you know. You know, again, being on board for twelve years, I've only served on the budget committee for one year and, um, like I said, it was just, it was super valuable and, um, I just think everyone should have that opportunity at some point.
What do you got, Todd?
Yeah, we gotta figure out that rotation correctly. Cause you haven't done it.
Well, I didn't, but since I was, since I was president, I was handing out committees and. And Anne didn't get made the commission, so I wanted to give her that one, so, and I was already doing enough, so I thought, I couldn't give up that, so. Yep, teacher of the year.
That's a fun one, yeah.
I don't know, everybody's gonna watch that picture.
Budget, um, and sports authority. Budget, yeah. Um, sports authority is being over there, um, I'm trying to do. Not well done, so. But housing.
When you, when you resume, how long?
Every couple of months. Activities, um, yeah, we'll have one for.
And the reason I ask is because I know, one of the things that we are hoping for in here may not get it. Is more guidance from our state organizations for athletic activities, but I'm sure people are gonna be asking questions. If we go into that activity season. Maybe.
Is, is a certain somebody still on that or did they have to resign?
Casey is on it.
He replaced.
Sports authority, or self-fulfill activities.
So he replaced Dr. Maher?
His term was up.
Oh, was it up?
And then they tried to fill me in there and you know, it was too, too long. Because they need to appoint somebody and then they pick somebody between them. So I've lost two.
He's not bitter.
I, I run twice and I was seven people. They just don't like Sioux Falls because they know it's hard to put a leave into it or you don't want to. I get the economic impact, but here, Steve Maffley, you wanna play with Charlie, get that. That Danny from the Center, you wanna play, you're on.
Crossroads is beautiful.
That's why they always say, runs it like Iowa does, not run things like that, so anyway.
I'm sure that will have more activity.
Yeah, well, I went to the marathon, you know, try and do a virtual.
I was just part of one where they staged it.
Uh, they're just doing the half marathon.
Yep, nothing else.
Yeah, some of them are just doing, do, they group you in start groups and they just run it all day. And then you show up and they fire the green just for your group and you go.
What we did is bring in.
But no one wants to run at two P M.
I was in the four o'clock group and I might have seen him.
You just went white this in your chair.
Yeah.
They have official timing.
Oh, yeah. Yes, there's a oral thing that they have.
Yeah, so now if you, it's the last one for the last.
Yeah, right, it's a big deal.
You wanna qualify them from.
Very good to know, I better know.
Yeah.
And so housing was just rounded up and still trying to fit the board.
What is it?
Um, what they did is they abolished the homeless program and affordable health. And so we actually have, have a new, probably, who you think the other important.
What's the official name of the group now?
Um, and what?
Yeah. Housing Authority?
Accessible Housing Advisory Board. This is not that.
Another acronym.
So on, this Friday at six thirty A M, we have a meeting. We have to ask three people. diversion. You know, the anti-home builders and. So that's what it is, and it's exciting, I've actually just put a million, I mean, housing in the justice. It's, the guidelines are a little tight, so I think that we can help in the overall.
Did the city here do anything with, um, sort of, we, we need.
Cause the ones who fall fun, that people can donate to and that people can apply for rental assistance.
But they didn't put a.
I feel like July and August is gonna be ugly if the unemployment ends and then. Some cities did those and I think the under it is maybe creating a group.
I think for the most part.
They suspended, um, premium functions. And so the other, people like to make their three months premium. This way, you know, all of this just plays into our picture as a school district. And the effects of this, whether we're able to physically keep people in places where we expect to have them. The ongoing effects, and we underestimate it. That looks like over time, even just where people come to the bone from the city and, um, moving within the city and having different circumstances, you're having prolonged periods of time. And certainly all those new people, some people in the business, like students, families, and that, so that you know how much. And we want people to put effort into their school, which is another reason.
At what point can students be gonna find, or are we applying for like free food lunch? Cause I'm just thinking of parents who already have a few months unemployed and will we, will we potentially see a spike in handback as well?
Well, I'm new, so I don't know, I don't know the answer, the, the timing. I'm assuming we probably send something out to families as part of their, you know, back to school enrollment and I'm hoping we have that film of it online too.
It's part of the application, the third registration, so if you go out and register your kids now and if you did select, you know,
free reduced lunch. And then it's the, are we pushing that maybe in some different ways and in the languages that we need to have them, you know. And even, you know, up until the point where we have to have those, and it's gonna be, um, schools and people really being, um, diligent about doing.
You from that side?
Nope.
I know. Okay.
One other one we have is A S C S.
I think it's best if we come on forward and tell the impressive people.
Delegate plus one?
We do have an alternate, we have a, we have a delegate and an alternate.
Then the board member, and we don't, we don't have that support. But, um, we've got good people. Didn't you though?
I went last week.
I think the challenge with that committee is just that we need to turn here, there's a way to.
Okay, well, I think after anything else, we are number four, which is your job.
Your motion to adjourn, don't move, you have a second.
Second.
All those in there, person you guys can say hi.
Bye.
Same time. Very good.